I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, July the 15th, 2013. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Lee Delbridge of the Smyrna Christian Church at 910 Concord Road, who will come forward and give our invocation, also lead us in the pledge of the flag. Everyone, please rise.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege we have to be here. We ask that you be with these city leaders tonight. Give them the attitude of a servant. Give them wisdom so that they will know what they should do. Give them courage so that they will do what they should do. We pray, Father, for the city of Smyrna, that things will go the way you want them to go. Through Jesus, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just so, I had a great Saturday morning with, I don't know what they were called, it was the men folks of the Smyrna Christian Church. I actually had breakfast with them and talked, and they were a great group. And Lee, I want to thank you for always coming and giving the invocation here. You've probably been here more than all the preachers put together. Great church located next to Regent's Bank out on Concord Road if you're looking for a change or you're new to town. Thank you so much. Agenda changes, only thing that's really not a change, we're gonna, when we get to formal business, A and B, the appointment of Ward 1 and Ward 5 members to the Smyrna Housing Authority, those will be tabled. Hope that Melanie Pritchett's doing good. She's out of the hospital, and hopefully she'll be back by our next meeting. Under the mayor's report, I do want to mention this, you may have seen it tonight on the news, there is an advisory asking the public to help locating a 13-year-old girl. Smyrna Police Department is seeking the public help in locating Gracie Mae Crowe, who was last seen at 2:40 this afternoon in the area of 1710 Cutler Ridge. Gracie is four foot 10, blue eyes, curly blond hair. She was last seen wearing a pair of cutoff blue jeans with a gray sleeveless shirt with a British flag emblem. I'm not sure if we pull, can we pull the picture up? Is it up? Good. Cutler Ridge is off of Ridge Road in the Binings Glen subdivision. As of right now, they have not found her yet, so just wanted to do that tonight before we got started. Thank you. Item 4 is land issues, zonings, and annexations. A is Z13-011. Public hearing zoning request, Z13-011, approval of zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan. 0.615 acre tract, land lot 520, 1201, 1207, 1215, 1223 Hill Street, Trayton Homes LLC. This is a public hearing. The background, please, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant, Trayton Homes, they're requesting a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved zoning plan to eliminate the shared driveway and to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet, thus resulting in the homes changing from a rear entry product to a front entry product. The applicant is not otherwise proposing any changes to the existing zoning conditions on the property and plans to follow the original intent of the development and has proposed elevations of the homes and the package that's been provided to all of you. Community Development has reviewed this proposal and found it to be in compliance with the original intent of the development and therefore do recommend approval.
Is the applicant here? Will you please step forward? This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this amendment to zoning application? Let the record show there is none. Scott, we need to... If you'll just have a seat, Chris. It's Ms. Terry Nolovich, Ward 10. I'm sure you want someone to come up and give a...
Yes, Mr. Sudworth, if you would enlighten us with these changes. Thank you.
Actually, the summary really does a good job explaining this because this is really a very simple request. We're not changing the existing zoning. It is currently RID conditional. It'll remain RID conditional. In terms of our future land use issues, it's a mixed use. It'll stay within the mixed use classification. The zoning, you can see where the subject parcels are. This was originally part of the townhome development that actually is oriented towards Fleming Street. Trayton Homes, just to remind you all, purchased this entire property, but were in front of us a little while ago, a couple meetings ago regarding the townhome portion. This is the actual single-family portion that was part of the original development. They're asking to eliminate the shared driveway, to convert the homes as stated earlier, from rear entry to front entry, and then have a reduction in the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 15 feet. The rationale for this has to do with what they feel is a marketing issue where there is concern by families that because of the rear, it being rear-loaded, they have no rear yard as a result. So I know Chris Poston is here if there's additional questions about that. This is the approved site plan. The location of the shared driveway, actually the driveway is in now. They would plan on taking that out. This is the proposed site plan, just standard lots for lots. These are the proposed billing elevations. As you can see, they're front-loaded. Subject property. Again, all we're doing is changing just a few of the original conditions, so we are rolling everything over from that original approval, which has to do with the composition of the homes and the protective covenants and the stormwater plan and so forth. The special conditions just have to do with the elevations, landscaping, you know, the trees. The major difference in the setbacks go rear changes from 20 feet to 15 feet. And that then they become bound to the new elevations, which we just went through on that. There was a question earlier in the review regarding the type of garage doors, since now it is a front-loaded product facing the street, that that will become more of an important item. And Trayton Homes has indicated that there will be carriage doors on that. Having said that, you do have a recommendation for approval in front of you.
Thank you very much. And that's what we, as we've been discussing this, that was my initial question, was will they be carriage doors? And by carriage doors, I mean a true carriage door, not just a door that's painted to look like a carriage door. And you may want to answer that, Mr. Poston.
Yeah, they are true carriage doors, yes.
Thank you.
Just for record, will you identify yourself?
Chris Poston with Trayton Homes.
Chris, anything you want to add to that?
No, again, this was just a simple thing. When we bought it, we were planning on going with rear entry. When we had people, we've actually already sold three of the townhomes, and people were expressing interest, but we found the interest was more with the front entry, where they could have some rear living space. And so this is just to accommodate that.
Sounds reasonable.
Yes, thank you.
Chris, I mean, y'all have more development y'all are looking at in Smyrna?
We do. I have a meeting tomorrow, and I won't say it just in case somebody else wants to buy it, but we're meeting on some more lots tomorrow, and we're excited about those. They're very close, and we have, I think, actually, three other deals we're looking at in Smyrna right now.
Good.
Yeah.
I can give you some heads up on some property that's, some on South Cobb Drive?
Absolutely. Let us know.
That's not one of the ones, I guess. That's been vacant for about five years, so. Okay. Anyone having questions, Mr. Poston? It's gonna be good.
Then at this time, I move to approve item 4A. It is item Z13-011. This is the public hearing for zoning requests, C13-011. Approval of the zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan. This is a 0.615 acre tract, land lot 520, which is 1201, 1207, 1215, and 1223 Hill Street. This is Trayton Homes LLC.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this zoning amendment request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a nice handkerchief in your pocket.
Thank you.
Is that real?
It is.
Okay, good. Thanks, Chris. Item 5 is privileged license. A is LIC 2013-21. Public hearing, privileged license request, LIC 2013-21 Beer Wine Package at 2691 South Cobb Drive. Nepal Investment LLC doing business as Cobb Food Mart. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
This is a new application for a privileged license for Nepal Investment LLC doing business as Cobb Food Mart for sale of beer and wine, retail package license. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this is at 2691 South Cobb Drive. Nepal Investment LLC is the owner, and Deepak Pahari is the agent applicant. He has been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and has attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. In addition, a background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department and did not reveal any information that would prevent issuance of this license, so therefore we do recommend approval.
Can I take it you are? Your name?
My name is Deepak Pahari.
Okay.
Yep.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license? This is a previously licensed location, so. Let the record show there is none. Mr. Cocking, one before him here. And this is Ms. Susan Wilkinson, Ward 10. Ms. Wilkinson.
Hello. Welcome to Smyrna. We're looking forward to you opening your business in Smyrna, and you'll be in Ward 5, which is my ward. And so I just wanted to welcome you, and I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about your business, like the hours you're going to be open, and what type of business you're going to have, and...
This business has been closed for quite some time, about 18 months, and a friend of mine, he referred me to open this business, and he said that it's a very friendly town, and it's a very good location, and we came and looked at it, and we liked the locations and everything, but there is lots of difficulties that we are going through, like getting, you know, the gas in there because it's been closed for over 18 months, and we have a lot of inspections that we've got to go through, and it's very costly. And at the same time, applying lottery, beer license, and all that, we are trying to open anywhere from 6 to 12, 18 hours operations. That's what we are trying to do. And we are 80% done with the gas, and we'll have a gas as soon as we have beer, wine, and lottery, and the deposit is made to them, and we are just ready to go after beer and wine license and lottery.
Okay. Are you planning to have any kind of grand opening, or when will you open, first of all?
We want to do grand opening, and the jobber who is supplying the gas to us, it's going to be a text ago, we are changing the brand. It's a marathon right now, and they promised us they will do some kind of opening for us, you know, bring big banners, signs, and drop some gas price by 10 cents for a couple days just to let the neighborhood know that we are here to do business, you know, to welcome them in our place. And the coffee company offer us that they are going to do something special. They haven't told me yet what, how they're going to do it, but they are planning to do something.
Well, you can just let us know about that 10-cent reduction on the gas, not even sense in stirring up the neighborhood.
We will, sir, definitely. You will find out.
And I just want to just, I want to interrupt just for a second, let folks know that the young girl that I had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting has been found, so.
Oh.
We don't know any other details other than she's been found, so it's great. Okay, now back to your 10 cent off a gallon for gasoline.
It's not me, the jobber, really want to do it.
Okay, so I was wondering, are you aware that the city does compliance checks periodically for the alcohol?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you learned that through the training program that you attended?
Yes, I saw the consequences, you know, and I saw the whole newspaper who got, you know, in trouble for selling to minors, not checking to ID and not following the rules. And I learned that already, so I'll try my best to do it. I'll do it. I won't be in trouble.
So, and what kind of measures or training are you doing with your employees to make sure that they don't sell to minors?
Actually, we have three of us now. We all went to classes, but in future, whenever we have some new employees, we have a folder that given by our instructor, and we'll go through it, and he teaches us, you know, what to teach the employees and what to let them know and all that. Or we can send them to the class, you know, there is a school right across the street from us, not too far. Our instructor can come to your location and instruct for a little extra fee. We are going to do that.
So I also wanted to ask you if you read the alcohol ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
And is there anything that you don't understand about it, or do you have any questions about it?
No, ma'am, I'm okay with it. And I went through, and I understand.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on the council that would like to ask any questions?
Just one quick one, going back to an earlier question. You don't have an exact date right now where you're planning to open?
No, sir, because, you know, the gas and lottery and beer, everything has to be there when you do the grand opening, otherwise, you know, customers get a little confused. You have half thing and half thing, you are not ready for it. So we are just trying to get everything ready. After all, our lottery is almost there, you know, it's already approved from Department of Revenue, and they say it's about another seven days to go. And the gas jobber is ready to go. He already went through his surveys and tank conditions and water in there or not. So technicians are coming back and forth there, and they say they are very ready to go. They have to drop the gas and do some kinds of inspections, and another 10, 15 days, but we'll announce it once we are ready and once we have everything in hand, license and all.
Yeah, this location has been closed for a while, so we look forward to you opening it back up, serving the neighborhood, and we want you to be successful and run a business according to all the laws and ordinances and, you know, treat our customers and citizens well.
Thank you.
One thing you mentioned about the grand opening is that you might put up some special signs or banners, and just a reminder to please work with our Community Development Department, Mr. Sudworth and Mr. Martin and their staff, to make sure everything is properly permitted and okay under our ordinances, just to make sure that you don't get in trouble with us. We don't want to be mad at you, we want to be friends with you and have you be very successful.
We came from DeKalb County, that's where we work, from DeKalb to come to Smyrna. It's like so great place, and we are already, you know, like experiencing very positive vibe, and we want to move up here, and we'll do best we can to maintain the quality.
Help us make Smyrna a better place.
It is the best place, you know, like in so many different ways. It's very welcoming. I went to city several times to apply for business license, and we went to DeKalb County too. I started process in DeKalb County three months back, and my license is still there because every time I go there for a very minor reason, I've been sent back and I have to go back again, you know. I missed one signatures. I was there, and I was not allowed to sign there because according to the law, I guess, you have to go back, sign, prepare, then you come to the counter. But here, I don't experience anything like that. You know, City Hall was so friendly, and they guide me through it, you know, and they helped me to go to offices to offices. Like I went to police department, fingerprint was very easy, and everything is very smooth and very, you know, welcoming, and we talk about it every day with our friends and everybody who do business in different counties.
Yeah, those are very kind words. Thank you for those. And again, we wish you luck.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Privilege License 5A, LIC 2013-21, for the beer and wine package at 2691 South Cobb Drive, Nepal Investment LLC doing business as Cobb Food Mart.
Second.
A motion is second to approve this previous license. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Just barely, 6-0, that's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck. You said all the right things.
I'll do right thing in the future, sir.
Item 6 is formal business. As I mentioned earlier, item A and B will be tabled. Item A is approval of Ward 1 appointment to Smyrna Housing Authority. Ms. Pritchett, can I get a motion that we table that till the first meeting in August, which will be...
Your Honor, I move we table item 6A, approval of Ward 1 appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority, to the meeting of August 5th.
Second.
I got a motion is second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Item 6B is approval of Ward 5 appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority. Ms. Wilkinson.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to table item 6B, 2013-269, for the approval of Ward 5 appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority.
Until August the 5th.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, you got to vote?
That's approved 6-0. Item 6C, under formal business, approval to purchase the property for the purpose of a new recycling center and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Mr. Taylor, the background.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the 2011 SLOST, voters approved the replacement of our city recycling center. We've been looking for land to build a new recycling center for a couple of years now, and we actually found a property that will serve its purpose and allow us to repurpose an existing building with a little bit of work. So we would like to recommend that the city purchase facility located at 3475A Lake Drive at a price of $435,000.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, we started looking for a piece of property back several months ago. We looked at two or three different pieces of property in different locations around the city. This parcel of property is very close to the existing recycle center. I felt like it was centralized to what we were looking for. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I would like to recommend approval of the purchase of the property for the purpose of the new recycling center and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Got one more out there somewhere. That's approved 6-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
We have eight items, to be more specific. Item A is an approval of the July 1st, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is to award RFP 13-031, Ward Street improvements to the lowest bidder Baldwin Paving Company for $827,564.11, and authorize the mayor to execute any associated documents. Item C is to award RFP 13-025, Creewood Trail Drainage Improvements Project to the lowest bidder KM Davis Contracting Company for $309,240, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item D is authorization to execute the Wendy Hill Road Widening CSX Transportation Engineering Agreement. Item E is to award bid RFP 13-026 for Cathy Lane Culvert Replacement Project to the lowest bidder Industrial Facility Solutions for $197,149.50, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item F is to authorize the installation of two speed tables on Fleming Street at the Hughes Street and Grady Street intersections. Item G is the approval and adoption of the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item H is the approval and adoption of revised personnel policy EMP 3-0, the recruitment and selection policy, and authorize the mayor to execute related documents.
To hear motion, we approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Sudworth to come up. I think he has a brief report for us, or a long report.
I can give you the long or the short, but I'll give you the short. The short is the trends are, the positive trends are continuing. We're in the summer months, and all the activity that we've had in the spring has slowed down, which is normal for us. It'll pick back up in the fall. So in terms of comparison to some of the other months this year, it's not near as good, but that is not to, it's no surprise to us. But I will, we'll give you one number, and that is the number of inspections that we had versus this time last year. For the six months of January to June 2012 versus January to June 2013, 2012 in that six-month period, we had almost 4,000 inspections. This year, we have 5,800. We've already conducted 5,800, so there's a substantial increase. And obviously, those inspections are the result of the increase in the other building numbers on that. So that's just sort of another way to show you that things are moving in a positive direction.
Thank you. And housing, housing has slowed down a little bit because the interest rates, guess what? They went up a little bit. They're up from like 3 and 1/2 to like 4 and 3/4, but there's still some great buys out there. With that, Your Honor, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nolovich.
Thank you. Yes, we enjoyed a fantastic time in the Market Village on Saturday night. We actually had some, we went up with our kids, and we had some friends' children with us, and I got a text from her dad the next day saying, you know, Anna had such a good time. She said that she got to go to the place where you get to eat outside and dance while you eat. I take that as a ringing endorsement of the concert. So I'd like to actually invite Jennifer Bennett up at this time to give a report from Community Relations.
That was the second of our summer concerts. The next one coming up is the really big one. That's the birthday celebration, August 3rd, from 6 to 10 p.m. Keep watching for information about that on the city website, smyrnacity.com. Also, the Facebook feed, www.facebook.com/cityofsmyrna GA. And I want to remind everyone that the best weather we're going to get this week is actually tomorrow night, Food Truck Tuesday Night. I think weather predictions are 10% or less chance of rain, so it should be really, really good. We have added a truck for tomorrow night, so we have 13. We've added a dessert truck called the French Truck. Tomorrow night's lineup is, the band is Holler for Waller. The trucks are the Black'siken, Buena Provecho, Freckled in Blue, Happy Belly, Ibiza Bites, King of Pops, Mixed Up, Hail Caesar, Super Noodles, The French Truck, Vietnamese, Yumby, and Yum Yum Cupcake. And if you can walk or bike there, it would help a lot, and we look forward to seeing you.
Jennifer, make sure that you mention the City Author Baking Golf Tournament, August the 3rd and 4th.
That's right. Actually, Parks and Recreation is going to talk a little bit about that. They'll tell you how to register, and that's, I think it's up on the website, too. You'll start seeing those things roll up as we get through tomorrow night's event.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Tony Joe Howard up to give an update from the Finance Department. I'd like to invite Tony Jo Howard up to give an update from the Finance Department.
I just wanted to let everyone know that we had some new budget documents on the website. I know everybody enjoyed reading the huge binder that we have, but now that it's been adopted, we actually have a condensed budget document that's on the finance website that is actually used for, submitted to the Carlinson Institute, which serves as a repository for all the budget documentation across the state. And new this year, we actually have a Budget in Brief, which gives a little bit of a different view, some pictorial information in there and kind of a, more like a popular report. So we think that that'll be good for citizens and a great way for you to get a, a quick look at what the budget actually included. That's it.
Yeah, the Budget in Brief is a fantastic document, and that's actually a good segue to the rest of my report. Thank you, Tony Jo. If, I put that, I put a link to the Budget in Brief up on my Facebook feed. If you want the most current information on happenings and news information about Ward Three, that's the place to get it. It's facebook.com/ward3teri, and it's T-E-R-I, and it's a public feed, so you don't have to have a Facebook account to look at it. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with Scott Stokes, and he had a couple of things, but I'll report those for him. Concord Road continues to move along. C.W. Matthews is working this week on storm drainage piping, water main on the north side of the road, and a couple of retaining walls out there. Fortunately, we hadn't been disrupted very much to this, to this point. Secondly, I had a contact, someone contacted me this morning regarding some poles down on Oakview Drive. I just wanted to let the people on Oakview know that AT&amp;T's reported that they will be on site with their engineers tomorrow. Not that they will replace the poles tomorrow, but at least they'll be out there on site. And also see Virginia Davis in the back of the room, and she's here from, from, "Keep
Thank you very much. I have a few things to mention tonight. The first is our Adopt-a-Mall will be held this Saturday, and volunteers can come to the back of Bronner Hall to pick up their supplies between 8:00 and 12:00 on Saturday. Our fresh market this past Saturday had 19 vendors, and in addition to the produce, I hope y'all have been able to go because there's a variety of things there. You can get dish gardens, dog biscuits, jams, spices, and even fresh flowers. And this Saturday, what a crock will be there, and that's the food truck. And they will be selling breakfast and lunch items as well as individual pot pies. We'll also have an acoustic guitarist there, Alex Gordon, so we hope that you'll be able to come and visit us there. Big news coming up for this fall is our document shredding event. We get lots and lots and lots of calls about, when is the next event? So we're partnering again with Iron Mountain. They'll be providing the services free of charge to our citizens. There is 100-pound limit on the amount of paper that people can bring. And the date on that is September 14th, and it'll be held at the Wolf Center on Church Street. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
What kind of dog biscuits do you have?
They're homemade dog biscuits, and there's a variety of flavors that they have.
Virginia, just a clarifying question on the document shredding. You said there's 100-pound?
Limit.
Maximum?
Yes. That's correct. That is equivalent of about four computer paper boxes, if you think about it in those terms.
Yeah, I thought I heard minimum, so I wanted to make sure it was maximum.
We do that so that we can get the flow of the traffic moving, so that you don't have to wait for a long time. And no medals, no binders, just paper. Okay? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield. Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
Thank you, your honor. So at this time, I would like to ask Mary Moore to come up and give us a report for the library.
Scott. Scott. Give it. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. I have just a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to congratulate the winners of the annual recycled art contest. Thanks go to Keep Smyrna Beautiful for partnering with the library each year on this event. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to read just the first place winners. For age three to five, the first place winner was Dylan Lightsey. Age six to nine, Natalie Reynolds. Age 10 to 12, Brooke Ryan. The teen category went to Carlos Sylvester, and the family category was the Milleron family. The artwork by these winners, as well as second place, third place, and the honorable mention winners are all on display right now in the children's department and young adult areas of the library. They'll be up probably through the end of the month. And I really want to encourage everybody to treat theirs themselves and go over and take a look at this art, because I personally was really impressed with the creativity and the resourcefulness of the entries. So it's just, you know, they're just fun, really whimsical art pieces. Secondly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the new wireless printing service we have at the library. This is, this service is for people that come into the library and bring their own laptop, and we have lots of people that come in every single day and bring their laptop to study and write and that kind of thing. And so now, if you have your own laptop, you can use our Wi-Fi system and print directly to our printer copier. The detailed instructions are on the library website, but in, just in brief, what they do is they download this temporary software that allows their laptop to communicate with our printer. And once they send their print job, it's just like any other computer user. If they'd used the library printer, they'd do the same thing. They'd just go to the document center, put in their money, get their printouts. So it's very simple, and right now, it works with people who have Windows and Macintosh laptops. And I'd really like to thank the IT department for helping us make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'd like to ask Steve Ciaccio to come up and give us a report for the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Our seniors down at the Wolf Recreation, and more importantly, the aquatic facility down on Shert Street, will be happy to know that the much anticipated dehumidification system is parked out back, being installed day by day, and next week ought to be online. And the dehumidification does what it sounds like it does. It pulls the humidity out of the air. So a couple of benefits, you'll be more comfortable, your, inside of your building will be a lot less wet, and my guards will be paying more attention because they won't be lulled into sleep by the heat that's on the deck. So we're very happy about that. We have two movies upcoming down at Taylor Bronner Park, movie night at Taylor Bronner Park. Those two movies are on Saturday, July 20. The first of the two is Wreck-It Ralph, and the second movie on Saturday, July 27, is Escaped from Planet Earth. Both those movies are free. These are youth-oriented events, and they start at dark, whatever dark means. Thirdly, Parks and Recreation is having a public input meeting. The city is having a public input meeting to review the findings and recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Some months ago, the city hired a company called Green Rock, and Green Rock has been gathering information, in part from the general public, as well as the leagues and mayor and council and staff and a lot of folks. And so they'd like to share their findings and recommendations on a meeting, or, excuse me, in a meeting on Wednesday, July 31 at 7:30 p.m. at the Community Center. The Community Center is at 200 Village Green. More specifics about what those recommendations and findings might be will be on smyrnacity.com once I tell Jennifer Bennett more about it. Lastly, on August 3 and 4 is the Arthur Bacon City of Smyrna Golf Championship. That is a rescheduled event. We had it scheduled for, I think, Mr. Mayor, the first weekend in May, but it rained all weekend long.
Yes.
And so August 3 at Legacy Golf Links, August 4 at Fox Creek Golf. The tournament fee is $100 per person and is a limited, and is limited to the first 100 completed applications. The entry deadline for the Arthur Bacon is July 31 at 5:00 p.m. So we hope you'll come out for that great event. It is, it is the city's golf tournament, and it's been hosted since 1986. Thank you.
Mr. Ciaccio?
Yeah.
I didn't catch, you may have said, is the senior, is the senior center closed?
No, no, no. We did not have to close it.
Oh, fantastic.
The, the unit that was there, the existing unit, was broken, for lack of a better word. They, they disconnected it. They, they have since put the dehumidification in a different location, on the ground, on a pad. They removed the, the original one, and they've been hooking up parts as we go. I think tomorrow, they're putting in the ductwork, and I'd probably say early next week, but since I don't trust myself, I'll say next week it'll be hooked up.
Thank you.
And it'll be much better. Thank you.
Steve, is there going to be any notification to the golfers who signed up for the May event, letting them know that the event's been rescheduled?
I'm sure. I'll double check with Fox Creek tomorrow, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. With that, I yield.
Mr. Wayne Lineker?
Thank you, your honor. We have no report tonight from HR, Court Services, City Clerk. So just two brief things. One, the missing girl from Ward Six tonight is just a good reminder to all parents during the summer to pay attention to where your kids are and where they go and how to reach them, and, you know, all the old things are, are still true. You know, don't get in cars with strangers, maintain situational awareness, what's going on around you. It just, let's all be careful and protect those that, that we love. I look forward to getting more details and information as we get it, and hopefully the girl is safe and not harmed in any way. On a lighter note, I just thought I'd report, and I mentioned this to the council as we got ready to come down here for the meeting. We had a sign over the weekend that those of us here in Smyrna, we finally made it in the world. And I know you're wondering, what the heck am I talking about? But I'm holding the crossword puzzle from the LA Times that was in the Saturday Atlanta Journal Constitution Newspaper, and the clue for 45 Down is Atlanta suburb, six letters, starts with S, Smyrna is the clue. Wow. Imagine that. We're in the LA Times crossword puzzle published in the Atlanta paper. If that doesn't say we've made it, I don't know what does. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel?
Okay. Thank you, Wade. Well, I want to echo the sentiments about looking out for your children and, and as a collective community, being on watch and on guard at all times. But let's thank our public safety professionals who just immediately went into action. Our police and fire personnel were all engaged with Cobb County and neighboring jurisdictions, and thankfully, that has been resolved favorably, that situation. But we, we have instant communication in this world these days. We have adequate preparedness. We have really talented people, but whenever the moment arrives, you never know how we're going to react. And here's another case where Smyrna's finest have reacted, and I want to commend and thank them for all the work they do every day, because it's 24/7/365 what they do, and we owe them a great debt of gratitude. So please do like I do when you see them, thank them.
That's why there is no report tonight.
That's right. And they're, they're out there, both Chief Lanning wanted to have a couple of updates, and Chief Lee. I will give you one of Chief Lee's updates. At my recent town hall meeting with the Bennett Woods Garden Club in Colonial Hills, we did actually make news at the town hall meeting, sort of unintentionally, but Michael Smith has been the Neighborhood Watch Program Manager for the last couple of years, and when he obtained his promotion to sergeant, he actually recruited a patrol officer to move into that position as in training. And whenever we brought an update to that community a couple of weeks ago, that news was made that we have Ed Kason, who is the patrol officer who's moving into the Neighborhood Watch position. You'll hear more from the Police Department about that. Those of you who are in the HOAs who have a Neighborhood Watch designated individual, I'm told they're working on some written communication which will go out, which will include some new concepts around design of a logoed look, but also an update of their manual that brings in some latest and greatest information, including things like our Nixle Alerts that we all, who have signed up, can take advantage of. By the way, also, for those of you who didn't receive a copy of my newsletter, you can do so by emailing me, either at my city email or to my personal one, ronfennel@me.com, R-O-N-F-E-N-N-E-L@me.com, and I'll get you on the newsletter list. It doesn't matter if you live in Ward Seven, but you can follow us on facebook/smyrna7 if you want to do that. We've actually set up a page for us to start sharing some information there and trying to learn how to best communicate so that everybody who wants to access the city of Smyrna and what we're doing can do so. And as always, we're looking for input on ideas, things we can do. To that end, I have two town hall meetings scheduled. One in partnership with County Commissioner Lisa Cupid this Thursday night. It's outside of the city limits, but is on the East West Connector at Presbyterian Village. That meeting starts at 7:00 p.m. The primary discussion at that meeting is the proposed name change of the East West Connector to the Silver Comet Parkway. You recall that the council adopted that suggestion back in February. The county commission has had it under consideration, and this is a public input session for the residents who live along that corridor and some businesses who may be impacted. So we welcome your input there. And then additionally, I have a town hall meeting in Smyrna at Jim &amp; Nick's on the 25th, which is a week from Thursday. So this Thursday at Presbyterian Village, the following Thursday night at Jim &amp; Nick's. At that meeting, we'll be discussing some zip code conversation centered around the 30126 and 30080 for about 3,000-plus residents who live in the Ward Seven southern portion of the, of the ward, who are in the unincorporated Cobb County and who are and remain in the 30126 Mabelton zip code. In light of the recent developments both in Powder Springs and in Vinings, we're returning to our persistent request to have consideration for those citizens who live in Smyrna to be able to have a Smyrna mailing address. We think it's important, and we're going to make sure the postal folks say so, but if you want to have some input in that conversation or on any other subject, join us at one of these two town hall meetings, and we'd be more than happy to try to meet your expectations. And finally, I want to thank the mayor for giving the annual State of the City address at our Smyrna Business Association last week to, what I'm told was a packed house, and the mayor brought people up to speed on what's happening in a very fiscally responsible, conservatively managed city with now 23 consecutive years without a tax increase. And it's, it's a remarkable success story as a municipality, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for bringing that news to people. And I'm told by all who were privileged to attend, it was well received, so thank you for doing that. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr.? Ms. Wilkinson, you have something?
Well, I was just going to add something to what Ron was saying, and on June 29, the Oaks of Concord neighborhood had a Neighborhood Watch kickoff party, and they are, I guess, the first neighborhood to display the new Neighborhood Watch sign, so I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Mr. Eric Taylor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in light of the police, public safety activity that we had today, I would like to once again encourage the public to sign up for our instant notification program that we use with the city called Nixle. You can go to www.nixle.com. That's spelled N-I-X-L-E. Not only do we use it for notifying the public situations where they need to be on the lookout for, for, for somebody, but we also use it to notify of other police activity, whether it be accidents or power outages, or weather alerts or things like that. So it is an excellent resource for receiving instantaneous news, and again, it's www.nixle.com.
Scott Cochran, anything?
Ms. Terry Graham, anything?
Okay. We do not have a show call hearing. We got one person signed up for citizens input. LaBrisa Edwards, 304 Hickory, Merrill Support, for topic. She not here? No, with business to be brought forth, this body, I declare its meeting adjourned at 8:22.